Good evening, the Arlington School Committee will come to order. At this time, I would ask us to take a moment of silence to remember several people who've passed away in the past week. Anna McGill-Dowen, Arlington Public School Student. David Perry, husband of Deb Perry, Director of our ELL K-12 Program. Bertha Huntley-Holmes, mother of Sue Briggs, Special Education Teacher at Arlington High School. And Dr. Mike Foley, Arlington Resident. At this time, we'll have public participation. We have several people signed up. Ms. Riordan may come up to the mic. And Ms. Newman.
Hi, I'm Deborah Riordan, and I'm an Arlington parent and the Chair of Arlington CPAC. I prepared a report of our Autumn 2013 Activities for Mr. Hayner, who's our liaison. So, we are just going to present the highlights of that. And there's a detailed copy for each of you. And there's also a copy on file with Ms. Fitzgerald. In September, Meet and Greet was held at the Thompson Elementary School. Presented primarily Ms. Kelly, Ms., excuse me, Kathleen Kelly-Lockyer presented and introduced the staff to the parents who were in attendance. Parents were able to ask any questions about the programs, express concerns, and it was an opportunity for parents to meet the staff, for both new parents and returning parents. In October, we had our Basic Rights Workshop. And just going to read that to you. Basic Rights Workshop was held at the Odysseum with David Dempsey of APS presenting and Ms. Jerry Newman of CPAC providing our parent perspective. The Basic Rights Workshop provides families with an introduction to their rights and responsibilities under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA, and the Massachusetts Special Education Law and No Child Left Behind. So, it basically helps parents to learn how to be effective partners with the child's school and to help decide eligibility for special education, help plan, make decisions, and monitor the child's progress in school along with the educational team, which is comprised of the parents and the school officials. In November, we held CPAC, a workshop for parents, on November 4th for executive function skills, for self-management, and that provided pragmatic approaches for parents to use with their children as students to help with the executive function challenges and help result in them being successful at school. We had that presented by Jackie Stachel, who's with the firm Thinking Outside the Classroom. That was pretty effective, executive function, I'm sure everyone, most people are in education. It's something that encompasses students both within special education and outside special education. Our meeting on November 18th was quite detailed, so I've provided the details here. We had both parents and staff attending from Arlington Special Education, as well as Dr. Kathleen Bodie. Dr. Bodie attended to talk about the upcoming search for a Special Education Director, the plans for the process, how that will be carried out. Parents had questions for her and were very receptive to the process as presented. The other items we have is, we talked about how Arlington has a new initiative, both for special education students and students outside of special education and general education, addressing executive function deficits in the student population. What we're going to do is have a forum in March, and the staff, as well as from the school, as well as someone from the ILD Research Institute for Learning and Development will come and talk about how that is being addressed in the schools, real approaches that they're actually taking, techniques that they're using to help the students and the teachers. That's going to be open to all parents in the town. There's a new form that has been issued by the DESE, and it is in regards to mass health. A parent, you know, it's always been this way, but there's a new form for one-time consent for parents to sign so that the schools can seek reimbursement for services that are provided by specialists, such as occupational therapists, social workers, physical therapists, et cetera. And the parent only needs to sign the form one time. And reimbursement is available for all students regardless of whether or not the student receives mass health insurance. So, that's something that could help to recoup some of the costs that are incurred with those services. One of the school psychologists, Ms. Allison Caruso, also attended that meeting to talk about the expanded role of the school psychologists and the social workers. They are now reaching out to the community, to parents. We're going to have an update on the school website, so parents will actually know what the school psychologists are available for, you know, beyond standard testing and have more of a guideline for parents and how they can proceed. Our CPAC website, we have not had technical access to the website since the spring, so we are working with Ms. Lockyer and some staff to kind of get together a meeting. So, what we're going to do is have a link on the school website, but the actual CPAC website will be hosted by another platform so that we can update it at any time. Since CPAC is staffed by volunteers, we need to have access to it on a regular basis because our members do check in with the website for information. And I think it's important for us to have access to that. So, that's something that we are hoping to finalize after the first of the year. We also talked about upcoming workshops that we have in January and March. The March one is the executive function one, as I mentioned. And the January one is going to be on transitions, and that will be held at the Odysseum School. And staff from Arlington will present, as well as a couple of CPAC members. And we're going to cover transitions from the different perspectives, from preschool to elementary, elementary to middle school, to high school, et cetera, because those are challenges for most students and families. And starting in June of 2014, we're going to be providing the school committee with an annual update of CPAC activities during the year, initiatives, programs, et cetera, so that we can highlight the things that CPAC has been involved with for the parents. So, kind of to, you know, to foster more of a working relationship. And in December, we also, December was, sure.
We've got a full meeting, and normally this time it's only for three minutes and...
Okay, I apologize, Mr. Hayner.
No, that's okay. I'm going to ask the Secretary to include the full document in our minutes, and the public would be able to access that at a future date for all the...
Okay, sure, that would be great.
I apologize for cutting you short.
No, that's okay.
For other people.
That's okay, I've been given the book, I know. That's okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Kathleen Coughlin? And I'll give you four and a half.
My name is Kathleen Coughlin. My husband is Mike Vardabedian. We have a daughter in kindergarten at the Stratton School. We've written two letters to the Arlington School Committee. The first one I read aloud at the November 21st School Committee meeting. The second letter is rather long, and would like to highlight points from that letter this evening. I'll try to be as quick as I can. "We would like to reiterate our concern that the Magic Treehouse Book Series is being used as a basis for curriculum themes in the kindergarten classrooms in Arlington as part of the Tools of the Mind program. The Magic Treehouse books are intended for children eight to 12 years old and in grades three through seven. The book themes so far have been dinosaurs, knights, mummies, and currently a book about pirates. The next book is about ninjas. These book themes inherently include elements of violence, danger, and frightening characters and are intended for older children. We do not currently read books to our daughter that involve these types of subjects and characters, as she is too young for these themes. As an example, I would like to read an excerpt from Chapter Eight of the Magic Treehouse Book Number Three, Mummies in the Morning, by Mary Pope Osborne. "A real mummy. Bandages were still wrapped around the bald skull, but most of the bandages had come off the face. It was Hutepe, queen of the Nile. Her broken teeth were showing, her little wrinkled ears, her squashed nose, her withered flesh, her hollow eye sockets. Plus, the rotting bandages on her body were coming off. You could see bones." And then there's some dialogue between the two characters, and it continues. "Jack pulled out the Egypt book and flipped to a picture of a mummy. He read aloud. Ancient Egyptians tried to protect the body so it would last forever. First, it was dried out with salt. 'Ugh, stop,' said Annie. 'Listen,' said Jack. He kept reading. Next, it was covered with oil. Then it was wrapped tightly in bandages. The brain was removed by... 'Yuck, stop,' cried Annie. 'Goodbye,' she dashed out of the room. Annie called Jack, 'We have to give her the Book of the Dead.' But Annie was gone. Jack reached into his pack. He pulled out the scroll and the scepter. He put them next to the mummy's skull." And that's the end of the excerpt. "We also question how much awareness and information parents have about the Tools of the Mind program. There is no mention of the Tools of the Mind curriculum or the Magic Treehouse Book Series being used in the kindergarten classrooms on the Bishop, Brackett, Dallin, Stratton, or Thompson websites. The Stratton website indicates that Foundations is our formal phonics and handwriting program, and it is implemented in all of the kindergarten through grade-two classrooms throughout the school system this year. It also indicates leveled reading, Fontis and Penel workboards, and others. We have concerns about the handwriting instruction part of the curriculum. I am a school-based occupational therapist myself. My understanding is that the children are to write sentences about the themes in books starting at the beginning of the school year, which they are not developmentally ready for, and doing that, I feel, can encourage poor graphical motor habits. I am having difficulty getting information about the graphics practice portion of the curriculum. As parents, we cannot access that information on the Tools of the Mind website. There is a password required, and parents cannot access that. In contrast, much information can easily be found when searching for materials from the Foundations program. Parents can easily access and print out complete parent guides, practice papers, and activities all for free. We question why the Tools of the Mind program is presented as a research-based kindergarten curriculum. There have been no studies completed on kindergarten-aged children. Studies have been completed on preschool-level children, and many of those are either not considered valid or did not demonstrate differences in academic achievement or self-regulation. The letter I wrote has links to documents that support that, and I have hard copies of those documents as well."
I'm sorry, if you can wrap it up in the next minute, please.
I will. "We were thrilled to know that our daughter would be attending a school that was the recipient of the 2010 U.S. Department of Education Blue Ribbon Award. We feel this indicates that the kindergarten program was strong as it was. Why did it need to be changed? Our main concern remains the use of the Magic Treehouse Book Series as a basis for the kindergarten program. We again request your support in ensuring that teachers are able to use age-appropriate stories, curriculum subject matter, and materials in the kindergarten classrooms. We understand the curriculum will be monitored by the school committee, as it was indicated at the November 21st meeting, but we do not know what that process is, and we don't know what the timeframe is for that. Our daughter has one chance at kindergarten. We do not want her and her classmates' memories of this precious time to include stories about potentially scary and upsetting subject matter. Families should be able to choose when and how their children are exposed to be books of this nature. We request that these books be removed from the kindergarten curriculum."
At this time, that ends public participation. Right now, I would invite Denise Boucher, excuse me, Food Service Nutritional Person, to report on Healthy Hunger.
Hi, I know I've been here before and spoken about this. I'm just here to kind of give a quick update of what's going on, where we're at. In 2010, Obama signed into law the Healthy Hunger for Kids Act, which is a very tricky thing to say, so say that 10 times fast, but essentially just to improve nutrition and access and combat obesity in children. Many of the things that are in these regulations were implemented, most of them were implemented last year. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Were implemented last year. A lot of it has to do with calorie ranges, has to do with fruits and vegetables. Historically, fruits and vegetables in the National School Lunch Program are two separate categories. As long as I've been in Arlington, even before I was in Arlington, we have always offered a fruit and a vegetable, so it hasn't been just one, you know, one category. It's always been two separate. And to also offer a variety of different types of vegetables, and actually, I put it in the packet that you have, the orange and the red, the dark greens, the beans, the legumes, the different types of vegetables that children may not be regularly exposed to. And we're required to offer those a minimum of one day, you know, during the week, so to offer the variety. Also, fat-free milk or 1% milk, more whole grains. As of this year, we have to offer at least 50% of the grains that we offer have to be whole grain-rich, which is flour that's 51% or more of whole grain. Starting next year for the school year, it has to be 100%. Right now, we offer very, very little products that aren't already whole grain-rich. There is one product at the high school that I have to mention. We do homemade macaroni and cheese, and we switched to the whole-grain pasta, and there was a little bit of an uproar with some of the high school students. So, for this year, until maybe we can find a better alternative to some of the wheat pasta that we're using, we did switch back. So, that is one of the products this year that is not the 51% or more of whole grain. But, so a little give and take this year, but hopefully, we can find something for next year so that they can have their macaroni and cheese. Also, it eliminates trans fats and reduces the amount of saturated fat in the menu, as well as less sodium. So, basically, looking at making their plates, half of their plates, fruits and vegetables, which is essentially what the dietary guidelines are for everyone. And this sort of plays a personal, special place in my heart, where when the regulations first all started coming about, and I had to start speaking to principals and parents and children about how little bit of the changes that are going to be happening in the school lunch program, I had to really sort of take a look at myself and my own diet and my own family. I have a five and an eight-year-old. So, really made me look at my own diet, and in the course of that, I've lost over 100 pounds. And so, this is really dear to my heart, this whole program. I'm very passionate about getting kids to understand and accept and want to eat the fruits and the vegetables. So, that's been a big, big push for me, is sort of exposing these children to the different fruits and vegetables and setting an example. So, I'm much more confident now, speaking to parents about why we're doing this when I'm not an obese woman. So, this is my little side little note. And one thing, too, is I just want to mention is, how supportive from top down, from superintendent to principals, to teachers, to the staff in the cafeterias, to my staff in the cafeterias, who many of them are actually, have grown up in Arlington, have kids that have gone through the Arlington School. Some of them have grandchildren that are in the schools right now. They care about the kids. They want the kids to be healthy. They want them to eat. They want them to take the time and be able to eat the good, healthy food. So, I think that's a huge, a special thing that, in Arlington, that we have here, that sometimes we don't see in some of the other communities. So, I just wanted to mention that. Also, it's really interesting, too, to go around and even see the foods that the children are bringing into the schools. And I'm from Chelmsford, so I've seen some of the lunches there. I've seen a lot of lunches in Bilrick. I've seen other communities. But to actually see what some of these children are bringing in from home is amazing. They are bringing, you know, the little fruits, the little vegetables, in their little bento boxes. It's just amazing to see that in Arlington, I think, parents understand the importance of it, which makes my job 100 times easier to have the support of the parents and to be able to work with these kids. Let's see, big thing we had to do last year was actually document and prove that we were actually doing what we're supposed to be doing. So, it was a long process, certification process, but we actually submitted everything last year in October, and we're able to get an additional six cents reimbursement for each of the reimbursable meals that we have. So, that's a huge, huge thing. And I also wanted to mention that looking at our participation rates have remained fairly steady, which is a huge, huge thing as well. Beginning of the school year, it's always, September's always a low month. You kind of see the numbers go up over, and then down towards June, when the seniors are gone, and when there's lots of field trips and whatnot, participation goes off. But it's been fairly steady between the last three years. So, that's a huge, huge thing for us. Let me see. Another great thing this year is, we were chosen for part of the pilot program for the fresh fruits and vegetables. We get an allotment from the USDA for commodity products. A lot of times, it's a lot of canned goods, a lot of beef, a lot of corn. So, this actually allows us to put an allotment, some of our monies, towards fresh fruits and vegetables that are actually delivered to our door. And it is a pilot program, so hopefully, it's something that works well and that they continue to do. It's great to be able to have, offset some of your costs, and have these fresh fruits and vegetables coming in instead of canned products. So, that's a huge thing, and hopefully, that it's something that works well and will continue. Let's see, this year, we've also been able to do some meal pattern training, obviously, with the staff. And with the schedule this year, we've already been able to do some professional development with our staff, with allergen training, which is huge, 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 as well as, we work with a lot of students that have celiac disease and gluten issues. So, it was great for all of the staff to be able to go to the training together, which very rarely are we able to do with, you know, the professional development days being half-days or getting out at 1:00, or we were able to actually do have a great professional development day for them. Also, we did a professional development day over just food safety, which obviously is one of the most important things. That's pretty much sort of the gist of where we're at. I don't know if you have, I've put some information in your packets, but yes.
Does anyone have any questions?
Could you make a comment?
Well, Denise, it compliments the parents in town, but I have to compliment Denise. We are unique in lots of respects as a community. Many school districts no longer have their own internal food service because of a lot of cost-cutting measures. But Denise has done an extraordinary job and her staff, not only of providing really healthy food, but also making it work. And it really is a testament to their skill and dedication, as well as to the parents who have their kids have lunch. I can say, going down there, that the food, the salad bars are fantastic. I don't know how anybody could leave hungry if you wanted, you can just eat as much as you want, and there's always big bowls of fruit. And it's probably due to the grants we have, but it's really nice to see students reaching for that, but they also tend to still reach for those little fruit cups, too.
Yes.
Yeah, of course. But anyway, it's a terrific, terrific job, and I know that with her leadership and the support of Arlington parents, we'll be able to continue this. I wanted to ask you, maybe you could comment a little bit on our morning breakfast, because one of the concerns of one of the members was, do we have children that are in class hungry?
That's another thing. We do have, we did have some questions with, we didn't have the breakfast program at the Bishop this year. Last year, I guess I should back up a little bit. Thompson School's a mandated breakfast site. They have more than 40% free and reduced rate. We're mandated to have breakfast. When they split those children up to the different schools, they were still Thompson children, so we had breakfast at the schools that they were at. Then, when those children went back to Thompson School, we went back to the schools that we had had successful breakfast programs at. And they were typically the schools that would have children that were coming in either from the MECO program or children that were there early, sort of a captured audience. Most children in Arlington are having breakfast at home. This year, we had stopped doing it at the Bishop School. The MECO program spoke with me. We did start it up again. We've had some participations, not huge, but there was definitely concern there, but they were worried that some children were going, were coming to school on the bus and not having breakfast before going to class. But I did want to mention, too, we always work with the principals, the social workers, the guidance counselors, the nurses, the teachers. They come down, a student's hungry, if you want an apple for the student. We do not let kids go hungry. Like, we, that is not something, it's not worth it for, you know, a 12-cent apple to have a child be hungry and go back to the classroom and not have had a snack. So, that, I would love to expand the breakfast program. It's very tricky as far as participation goes in getting those kids in there. Like I said, Arlington is one of those communities where a lot of these kids are eating at home. Their parents are feeding them before they bring them to school. I mean, it is something that I can look at, as far as I know. I was just reading, there are some grants available. Unfortunately, a lot of times, the grants are for schools that have very high free and reduced rates. So, it makes it a little trickier, but, so, I mean, children, as far as, you know, working with staff at the schools, the children are not going hungry.
Right. That's, I get that report from all the schools, that they're really fantastic about helping in that regard.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make one comment to follow up on what Dr. Bodie said. So, my understanding with our lunch program is, another way that we're different is that we actually make money, which is not true in a lot of places.
We're not, it's very self-sustaining. I wouldn't say that would make any profit on this.
But I mean, we're not losing, we're not losing money, which is the case, and I think a lot of communities. So, I applaud, I mean, I applaud you in feeding their children good food and also making the cost...
Thank you. My big plug, though, is, when are they going to redo the high school? The facilities down there, I'm like, I don't want to pump money into the kitchen if it's ever, if it's going to be redone soon. But that is one of the, my two, my two schools, the, would be the high school, as far as facilities go, and the Stratton would be my other baby that I would love to be able to see down the road. road. Put my little request in. Thank you. Oh, thank you.
I did want to ask just how the new Thompson Central.
Oh, thank you. That's one of my things, I'm very, very excited that they're reopened. It's, we're slowly adjusting because it's a different setup. It's not too separate. It's sort of one together, so they're working together to serve the regular classes, the meals there, as well as making items to go out to the schools. But it's great because she can now make the taco meat again. She can make the sauce again. Making the homemade stuff, obviously, we all know is less sodium, you know, less fat. So, it's, it's great. We're very, very excited.
The other question I have is just, you talked about how participation at the high school levels and drops and where we do so much to personalize the food offerings. I'm wondering whether you surveyed the students in any time to see what types of offerings they might want to add in that they don't currently have.
We, it's actually interesting, there's a parent who actually wants to work with me on a survey for the middle school, which I'm sure that's something that we could then do for the high school as well. So, yeah, I mean, that would be great to be able to kind of see. You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. No, thank you all. Thanks. I appreciate all the support. And it's, truly is a testament to the staff that we have that works at all of these schools. So, thank you.
This time, teacher priorities for fiscal '15. Ms. Hanson? Ms. Hanson, you're aware and I think other people are aware, but we need the microphone.
Yeah, we'll pass, we'll pass the microphone down. Thank you. I want to start off by thanking you for having a spot on the agenda tonight for the teachers to be able to add our two cents to your budget deliberations. And I have with me tonight, teachers representing all the different levels of the school system. We have Nancy Knopf from the preschool and Julie Keys from the Addison, Val Sarzen from the high school and Siobhan Foley from the elementary level. So, we'll keep it brief, but we do want to just say a little bit about teacher priorities at each level. So, again, we appreciate the chance to weigh in, both with a teacher response to the administrative priorities and the addition of a few items that we didn't hear mentioned in the other presentations. My part is just going to give a very brief overview and make a couple of points and then I'm going to pass it to each of the teachers here. We all understand the financial constraints you are working within as you put your budget together and we respect the thought you put into figuring out the best way to spend the limited amount of discretionary dollars. We know we all need to stay conscious of building the school system we can afford, not necessarily the school system we would dream of, but we want to share a few of our very kind of tame dreams this evening with you. Teachers have definitely appreciated the comments by administrators about how much is accomplished in this district with the modest budgets we have at our disposal. Overall, I think that what we heard from administrators mirrors our perspective that we need to continue to shore up and support the things that we are doing now. We need to help alleviate some of the stress of large class sizes and large cluster sizes so that teachers can better fulfill the multiple mandates of the new Common Core curriculum, the new PARC assessment system that's coming, the new teacher evaluation system and other things like the mandated English language learner courses. And so that we can have the staffing to help teachers meet the diverse needs of the many kinds of learners sitting in their classrooms. So, I'm going to touch briefly on four different areas. The first area is the new educator evaluation system. There are two components to this new system. One is definitely an evaluative component. How well are you doing what you do? The other is definitely a professional development component. How can we help you get better at what you do? And I want to go back a little bit to the role of department heads in the new, what we're calling the new Common Core era. A few years ago, the district had to cut back to less than full-time department heads to save money when we were really tight and constrained for budgets. Over the past few years, some of those part-time positions have been restored to 1.0 FTE. Others are still at less than full-time. While we have talented department heads of both the part and full-time variety, where we have less than full-time people in those positions, we do see a diminished capacity for those people to provide the amount of content-specific support at all levels, including the elementary level, for the coaching and professional development evolved, involved in the new evaluation system. Administrators with general education backgrounds can generally provide the evaluative piece of that formula with proper training, but it's much more difficult for them to provide the ongoing content-specific professional development that the new evaluation system envisions. So, we urge you to review the number of less than full-time department heads and consider increasing their FTEs to enable them to both serve as primary evaluators for our specialist teachers and to facilitate a greater number of professional development opportunities in the content areas at all levels, which is what the Common Core standards are requiring of us. The second point I want to talk about is the behavior support personnel pay. If last year was the year of raising substitute pay to more parity with our surrounding districts, this year might just be shaping up to be the year of raising the pay level of teaching assistants with that more specialized training to assist with both the substantially separate and inclusion programs. We heard this mentioned in several of the administrative presentations. The consequence of having a level of pay that's significantly below other districts in this area in particular is that it's difficult to attract and retain a full complement of qualified personnel in these positions. There's mid-year turnover due to people understandably moving to higher-paying districts when given the opportunity. These positions are in demand everywhere and they are critical to the success of many of our programs. Not that we don't have qualified people in those positions now, but we often don't start the year with a full complement of staffing in these areas and there's turnover during the year leading to staffing gaps. These factors affect a teacher's ability to properly plan curriculum, supervise the students and for the students not always getting the support that they need. Technology is the third area I'm going to touch on. We were glad to hear the pitch by Dr. Jang for more up-to-date staff computers. It's difficult to use all of the software systems expected of teachers these days with the older, slower systems that many of us have at our disposal. Today, we have different software systems that collect student data, post assignments and grades, interact with the teacher evaluation system and support the use of technology in our instruction. The old computers in some schools simply aren't up to the task. IT support is another area in technology and while we're always glad to hear about technology purchases for the district for both students and teachers, there really should be a kind of formula perhaps that for every X amount of dollars spent on technology, an proportional amount of IT support is also added. Having the tools without the IT support to make sure the technology will work when you go to flip the switch and that it's properly maintained and serviced can be an exercise and frustration. Again, not that we don't love our current IT staff, they're just spread too thin. And this also speaks to the value and need for additional IT instructional support to help teachers really understand how to best use the technology in their classroom. The T-21 program, it's a class that's running this year, has gotten rave reviews from all the teachers that are participating, so we really hope that additional opportunities like that will be offered to teachers. The last point I'm going to touch on is kind of the work environment. Last year, you scored huge points by replacing the tired, broken-down Xerox machines. I can hear the teachers cheering in the background right now. There are certain things that make up kind of the workaday stock and trade of educators and if those things don't work reliably, or if they work reliably intermittently, it creates all kinds of aggravation. Climate control is kind of under this category as well and it's another huge factor. Heat in the wintertime. Last year, the heating system was out for several days running in the high school in certain areas. It affected the preschool program and certain wings in the high school. Teachers and students shivered in classrooms for several days in a row in the high 50s and low 60s. This year, a backup boiler is being replaced. Diane Johnson's not here and I'm sure she'd be nodding her head, which will hopefully take care of some of this problem. But on the other end of the spectrum, cooling systems in June and September heat. We know we won't see air conditioning in our lifetimes in the schools, but it would be great if the district took charge of ensuring that every room that needs it has a district-provided industrial-sized fan. In some schools, PTOs have paid for fans and other places, teachers have bought their own fans, but we would love to see the district take responsibility for providing basic, reasonable climate control for all the classrooms in our buildings. So, now I'm going to hand it over to Nancy Knopf, who's going to talk a little bit about the preschool.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Monotomy Preschool. I have been teaching at Monotomy Preschool since 2001 and Monotomy Preschool has been part of the Arlington Public Schools for over 30 years. It was created as a laboratory preschool for the Family and Consumer Science Department and for high school students studying child development. To this day, many students still graduate from the Arlington High School prepared and certified to work in the early childhood programs licensed by the Commonwealth. For many years, the program served 20 to 25 children on any given day. In 2009, Monotomy Preschool transitioned from Family and Consumer Science and became part of the Special Education Department. And this was done in order to provide an inclusive preschool program for the Arlington families who had, were having their children transported to Lexington, Belmont and Burlington. Monotomy Preschool now serves 60 children on any given day in our classrooms and 60 additional children receiving speech and language services, physical or occupational services or access to one of our social groups. We have grown from serving 25 children to serving over 120. So, the old Monotomy Preschool had one classroom with an adequate-sized, child-sized bathroom directly adjacent to the classroom and playground. And the new Monotomy now has five classrooms, therapy space for two speech and language pathologists, a physical therapist, an occupational therapist and offices for an early childhood coordinator, a psychologist, a lead teacher and a social worker. Three out of the five classrooms have no direct access to sinks for the necessary activities of hand washing and hygiene and typical activities of finger painting and other messy and fun sensory experiences. Two out of the five classrooms require long walks to the bathrooms, which are not child-sized. A necessary part of our work is to provide toilet training and support families and these long walks make spontaneity difficult. Over the last year, we have had the pleasure of working with Dr. Bodie, Diane Johnson and Bill Hayner to address some of our facility deficits. Some of the highlights were we have now working blinds for all our windows, a more permanent wheelchair ramp, a new space for the delivery of occupational therapy services, a new door from the hallway to one of our classrooms and all of the heat pipes have been rewrapped and we are greatly appreciative of this support. Our continued challenges, some of which were mentioned above involving the hand washing and toileting, are the fact that we are divided by the courtyard, requiring people to travel outdoors through snow and ice this past week, inadequate parking for over 60 families receiving services and the ongoing struggle to make the current space work for very young children. I share this to highlight the need for a new and improved early childhood center for Arlington. When the Thompson was being rebuilt, a new early childhood center was in the original plans. Our understanding is that it was dropped out of the plans early on in the process. With the growing momentum for a new high school facility, I speak for everyone at Monotomy Preschool and respectfully request that the preschool be part of the renovations. These renovations are important for the community as we ensure our continued relationship with the Family and Consumer Science Department and because we are the gateway to the Arlington Public Schools for over 100 Arlington families. Thank you very much.
Thanks Nancy. And now we have Siobhan Foley to talk about elementary priorities.
I'm just going to scooch up. I don't want her to have to come out and adjust the microphone again. Good evening. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. A few weeks ago, the elementary principals presented to you their top budget priorities for the coming year and their top three were more behavioral support staff for the elementary schools, rewriting the job description for the library TAs to better reflect the job they are currently doing and to increase their pay. And they also mentioned smaller class sizes. The elementary teachers have also mentioned these same issues as concerns for the upcoming budget. In addition, they've also mentioned the importance of increasing the number of qualified teaching assistants, including full-time TAs in the kindergartens and more reading, math and special education support. With the increase in technology in the schools, teachers are feeling that the level of support for these technologies is inadequate and needs to be increased. The teachers have also expressed the opinion that the elementary schools could use assistant principals, unlike the principals who could probably also say that they could use assistant principals. They did not mention that for themselves, but teachers in the elementary schools are seeing the need for that. If I had to pick the top three priorities for elementary school teachers, it would be class size, class size and class size. I would like to mention an argument that I think explains the importance of this at all grade levels and the elementary level. In general, common educational wisdom acknowledges the fact that grades K through 2 should have lower class sizes. When classes at those levels are too big, class management begins to suffer. What's not acknowledged or recognized is that when class size is too big at grades 3 through 5, teachers are not able to give children the full level of support that they need to have, especially with our requirements for the Common Core, which is asking us to go much deeper into the curriculum and to have children go much deeper into their thinking. To give an example from my own classroom, I teach 3rd grade and we do a character trait or a character unit every year. And in addition to having the children choose a character and give me character traits that would explain that character, they also have to give me evidence supporting their reason, their choice of character trait. Now with the Common Core, in addition to giving me evidence to support that trait, they are also having to explain why that evidence supports the trait that they're choosing. This is a much deeper level of thinking and of work that these children have to do. And to do that with 27 children in my classroom and to support all of them, and I'm not talking about children who in general need support from special education personnel, I'm talking about general, children who would normally be fine, but under the new Common Core, they're requiring much more from me. And to do that for 27 children is a challenge, to say the least. Thank you.
We have Julie Keys from the Addison.
Hi again. I'm happy to be back with you tonight to speak about the budgetary needs of the Addison Middle School. I think Mr. Ruggieri's presentation last week was right on target with the needs of the building. However, he's forced to be somewhat realistic when he comes here and I feel like I can be a little bit more direct. We need more teachers. We are grossly understaffed at the Addison. While the elementary schools in Arlington have added 24 new teachers in the past five years, the Addison's actually down three. As the large population grades move into our school, we need to see proportionate staffing increases. That's about 15 staffing positions if you're just looking at the numbers. Unrealistic, I know, but it's really necessary to our school. Many studies have proven that smaller team sizes in the middle school level lead to increased student achievement. When you asked Mr. Ruggieri last week how staffing increases would improve our SGP, these are the studies that answer that question. There's a decade and a half of research showing that smaller team sizes lead to improved student performance. Many of the studies recommend 90 students per team, cluster. Next year, most Addison teams will have about 130 students, 2/3rds higher than the ideal size. With class sizes as they are, students will get less than two minutes of attention per class period. That's not much time when you're trying to motivate, remediate, adjudicate, inspire, inquire and teach. We need teachers to meet our school goals. That trickles down to teachers meeting their individual goals and that trickles down to students improving their SGP. We need a full cluster in 6th grade at minimum, since that's the important transition year. 6th grade teachers have far more parent contact as families move up from elementary school and therefore they need fewer students so that they have that time to have that close contact with parents. Ideally, we need another team in 7th and 8th grade too. However, we could do with a four-person split-grade team that would have like a couple periods of 7th, a couple periods of 8th. That's eight teachers total right there in cluster subjects. Add to that the foreign language special ed exploratory teachers that Mr. Ruggieri requested. We really need like 13 teachers to be fully functioning as a proper middle school. Less than that and we're going to be overloaded and education will suffer because of large student loads on staff. Just a side note, I think our art and music teachers are currently serving about 330 students at a time. When you think that every teacher now has to involve writing, that's a lot of writing and work to be reading. Finally, Mr. Ruggieri's requests for funds for improved security in the building are absolutely vitally important. I'm definitely not a worst-first kind of thinker, but we need doors that lock securely in our building and a way for staff to enter the building without compromising our security. I love that our building is a community center, but it leaves us open to vandalism and theft. We need cameras and security so that we can keep allowing local organizations to come in without feeling at risk ourselves. organizations to come in without feeling at risk ourselves. Thank you for allowing us to give this input tonight. You all have a handout here that has some of the data that I've been referencing, since I know that was something you were looking for last week from Mr. Ruggieri, so.
Can I pass it then?
Yep.
Yep. Hi, I'm Valerie Sarrazin from the Special Ed Department here at the high school, and we have three specific areas in the high school that I would like to address. The first one, of course, is the building upkeep. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail because walking through the halls here speak for themselves, along with the NIESC report that backs up some of those conditions. But the one thing I do want to address is the custodial staff. The custodial staff is working, I believe, at the best that they can, and the building is quite large to deal with. It is falling down in many, many areas. The evidence of mold in the bathrooms and just the the upkeep of trying to get windows to open up, they all speak for themselves. And what I'm looking for is is the support for the custodial staff for the building as it is. We're looking at a rebuild, and the future building team is looking at proposals, but we're looking at a new building, not for a good six years. And during that time, I believe the custodial staff needs support, not only in in population, but also in materials. Many of the things that they're working with are very, very outdated. They get used up very quickly because of the rough textures, and I just want to acknowledge them that they are doing the best that they can, but we're dealing with a hundred-year-old building, and it is what it is. The other thing is, though, that does need to be maintained is just the the appearance. We have doors that are that are broken. We have chipping paint, and all of this not only leads to the appearance, but also to the security. Many, many doors here, as we said earlier, do not lock. If they do lock, a good, good pull, the kids know this, if you give it a good pull a certain way, you can get those doors open. And we're looking, even though we've told the faculty and we've told the students, if you see an open door, please close it. It's a huge building, and there's an awful lot of doors. We have a lot of the town coming in for town business and everything, and I just really believe that this is something that we have to adhere in light of what's going on in the world today. If that takes putting little buzzers on on doors that are being kept open, things like that, just little things like that in these next few years before we really revamp the school would certainly bring some peace of mind to the people who work here, as well as to some of the students. The second area, of course, is curriculum and staffing, and you heard it many, many, many times about the shortness of staff and the increase in class sizes. And this is going to continue on through the to the high school level. The enrollment continues to increase, and even our graduation requirements are now being pushed to their limits. Up to this year, only three years of math are required for graduation, but ninety percent or more of the students are actually taking four years of math. Why? Because the colleges and universities the kids are applying to have basically said, don't be a sloth in your senior year. We want to see that you're still challenging yourself. We want to see that you're still producing good work. And to do that, there's not a lot of extracurricular activities out there for them substitute, so they they deal with the math, they deal with the science. And when it comes to the science, I don't have to go into a lot of detail about the lab safety. We're looking at many of the labs that are undersized based on the number of students that are in there, which causes concern. Also, the lack of protection, such as the eye wash and the storage of different chemicals. The physical education department is also expanding because for the graduation requirements are now have expanded to deal with not just your typical ninth and tenth-grade curriculum, which covers health, but they're going into nutrition. They're going into sports science. It's real, these are classes that the students are interested in and want to take as part of their electives, and we just don't have the staff in order to be able to serve all the students that are requiring this. Lastly, in the social and his social studies and English areas, Mr. Janger went into some of the more specifics about combining some of the teachers to make it a one-point-o position. We have English where we need another full-time teacher. Social studies, we currently have a point-two, but we really could use a one-point-o area in there to accommodate those students, and he gave you a specific examples of, you know, combining them. So as opposed to hiring brand-new teachers, maybe taking those point-twos and the point-eights and combining them into a one-point-o position. I won't go into all the other ones, where languages, facts, but the one thing is with regarding general education support, we talked about the TAs. The TAs are not just necessary for the Special Education Department. We need TAs in the general education population. They are there to help support the attendance. I mean, right now, our deans are dealing with looking at attendant issues. They they should not be looking at attendant issues. We've got so many behavioral problems. We have programming that they should be looking at. They should be there supporting the teachers, but they're dealing with attendance. Who's here? Who has skipped? The other thing is, by having more TAs, we would be able to have more hall coverage. With hall coverage, we'd be able to see who's coming into the building that doesn't belong here. Every student and every staff worker is required to have a photo ID on their person. If somebody stops them and asks you, do you have a photo ID, and they don't have it, that that certainly is a problem. Right now, the teachers are in the classrooms. We've been asked to come out of the classrooms during passing times, but as you know, most of the times, that's not possible because you're prepping for the next class. A student stays after to ask you for more clarification of a math problem. By the time you can break away to get out into the hallway, bell has rung, and the next class has begun. Right now, we do have an individual, Diane Swift, in our old hall, because as you know, we don't have a substitute service. So the kids go there when teachers have to go to IEP meetings or they're absent. They have to go to other things, and that puts an awful lot of pressure on not only on Ms. Swift, but also on teachers. Their duty would have to go in there to to watch the students, taking them away from critical planning time or even, what do you call it, collaboration time. If we had a teaching assistance to assist with the old hall, it would leave the teachers free to be able to rework their curriculums and better serve the students. And the last thing I'm going to talk, well, not last thing, but the last curriculum issue is good old special education, my favorite subject. As some of you might know now, at the Jermaine Lawrence School for Girls, we have created an alternative high school. The students who are placed there by DSS are now.
Does this remain?
Well, they're right. I'm from New York and talk faster. Anyway, they are going, they are, we've created an alternative high school there because some of those students are not able to come to the high school as of yet. But because they live here in Arlington, Arlington is required to teach these students. And what we're looking at is, we already have a full-time teacher there. We also have one of our current teachers moving, going there the first two periods, then coming back here. We have a social worker that spends part of our time there, then her other part-time coming back here, and we have an overburdened team chair here at the high school who is trying to maintain the IEPs and the regulations here, as well as trying to do there. We're hoping that a part-time team chair and a part-time social worker can be, positions will be created to deal with just that population. Lastly, technology. The school is old. The buildings are cement. We don't get a lot of Wi-Fi. We're doing the best that we can. Only a few people have the smart boards, but if we can't afford the smart boards, we are looking for projectors for each teacher's. We are looking for hopefully laptops for each teacher because we have moved a lot of our standalone computers into labs to service the students, but then the teacher is with her own computer, and if she doesn't, he or she doesn't have an overhead, it's, we're still back to the the pen and paper and drawing on the board situation. And, you know, we're in the twenty-first century. We've been here now for quite a few years, and, you know, we are we going to, you know, are we going to start looking like we are part of it, or are we going to still keep saying we're doing the best we can? Thanks.
Great. So thank you. That's.
Are there any questions from the committee at this time? Ms. Hatt?
Is it possible that you guys can send us that stuff electronically? That would be great, because I took notes, but it would be great if I could have.
And I'll send it all to you, Cindy, through the secretary.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Would you also send a copy to the superintendent as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
At this time, I wish to apologize to the public, and especially to Mr. Pierce. I did not explain why Mr. Pierce is not here. It's a personal matter, and he was not able to attend tonight. I deeply apologize both to him and to the public. My only excuse is I'm old. Moving on, scope committee members, discussion of priorities for fiscal fifteen budget. How would you like us to do this?
Maybe you might want to ask this person if they want to talk a little bit about it.
Okay. I would ask the committee individually to, if they have their priorities, or if we want, put one out for discussion.
I had four things I wanted to bring up. First, I'm concerned about the, I'm not sure my mic's on, but I'm concerned about class sizes at all levels, as has been greatly discussed by our principals and by our teachers. I'm concerned that until now, we have some unmet needs which haven't yet been communicated about the, I'm thinking of full-time directors of science, art, and music, some of our departments. I had the same concerns that Ms. Hanson so eloquently discussed, and also in IT and possibly in facilities. Third, I'm concerned that I'm not sure we have any point in our discussion where we're going to be checking in with parents, except for the public hearing, which in the past, I haven't found to be our best place to gather information, and I would, I personally would like to hear from them, even if we're going to be, the schedule, the budget's going to be dictated by the needs that have already been hurt. I just think it's good to hear from parents. They may have other thoughts and concerns that maybe we can think about for the next year. And finally, I'm wondering if we're going to be having a feasibility study for the high school coming up. Do we have to pay any portion of that, or does it come from capital? And I just don't know the answer to that. So.
Want to just go through them all, and you want to respond as we go?
It's your choice. It's fine. All right. As far, I could go to the bottom backwards a little bit. The feasibility study, what precedes that is a statement of interest. And as you have in your packet, we just received a letter from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and the the deadline for a submission is going to be April eleventh. So yes, the intent is that we will be submitting. It requires the signature not only of this committee, which I'm assuming everyone will want to do, but it also requires the signature of the town, the board of selectmen and the town manager. So there's ongoing discussion about that. There were some things that we did not, we being administrators, did not highlight, which was the issue of our curriculum leaders. It is true that when we've had, particularly back, really starting around oh-nine, we've had to prioritize how we were going to be able to make ends meet, and we do have some curriculum leaders who are not a one-point-o. However, I'm not sure that their positions would require them to be a one-point-o, but that doesn't mean that we could not always use some increased time. Now, the issue is, can, it's a more complicated issue than just saying, can we have more time from these from these curriculum leaders, because it may be that that's not a possibility right now. I think that what you're hearing tonight is, what I had said last time, is that over these years, we have focused on elementary, but we really have minimally increased the staffing at the secondary level. It's not that we've ignored staffing at that level, but we've been more allowing class sizes to creep. I think everybody's aware of that creep that's happened, and we've just reached now a critical point, particularly at the middle school and the high school for that matter, in which we really do need more staffing. And you had mentioned the issue of also facilities. I think that's been a, that that certainly is a major issue here at the high school. It's an issue at the middle school as well, in terms of we need to be looking at, and we are looking at, how we're going to perhaps reutilize, repurpose some of the rooms, reconfigure them. Because even though you might want to have, say, say we did have thirteen more teachers or even eight more teachers in cluster, we do not have eight classrooms to put eight teachers in cluster. So that's an issue. I mean, we certainly have, with some reconfiguring next year, we certainly could do another cluster, but we'd be stretched beyond that. And that is something I think that we need to look at, long-range planning. We've talked about that somewhat. We haven't done any real planning around that, because we have two other facilities. We are also simultaneously looking at and needing to look at their upgrade.
Since this item is considered a discussion, I would invite other members to, on the topics, just one, just on the class size. I think to the the plus side to the staff and the negative side, they continue to do a great job with the facilities and the overcrowded classrooms. But there's, as was mentioned tonight, there's going to be a point with more and more required for the staff to do. It's going to be harder and harder, and I think this committee, at least in future budgets, has to look seriously at class size. I appreciate what you just said. If we could afford those other teachers, where would we put them? It definitely in this town has a ripple effect. With max, just about reached the maximum capacity of classrooms, we have more staff. These are questions that we have to, this this committee and future committees are going to have to deal with yearly.
I just wanted to ask one follow-up point. I appreciate your discussion about my points. I understand the process with the MSBA, but to my understanding, it puts the potential feasibility study falling into next school year.
That's, that's correct.
And so I'm wondering, do we have to pay for it?
I omitted mentioning that, yes. Well, if we get invited into the eligibility period, then yes, we'll have to go to town meeting and ask for money for the feasibility study.
So it wouldn't come out of our budget for twenty, okay. That was my question. Thank you.
It'll be a substantial amount of money. It'll be under a million, but it will be quite a bit.
Right. That's why I wanted to know where it was coming from.
Which year would we be doing this? Would we be looking at the two thousand, let's assume everything goes for us. Will we be going to town meeting in 2015?
Probably sooner.
This, so we.
Fourteen.
So we should be prepared to go to town meeting this year. Thank you.
Okay. This year in the spring?
No, no, fourteen, the fall. Yeah, the fall.
A special town meeting? We're talking a special town meeting. Okay.
Right. What would be this year?
Fine. Thank you. The deadline is like two weeks before this.
Right. I got a little panicky on that. Okay, thank you for the clarification. Ms. Haim?
You know, I'm echoing a bit of what's already been said by Dr. Alson Ambe. You know, in terms of what we've been looking at, the direction that the district has taken, our first commitment has to be to the students in the classroom. We now have a mechanism for balancing elementary students to help with the overcrowding. We need to really focus on the Audison and high school and normalizing some of those class sizes. And in addition, the high school and the renovations, you know, that has to be a major area for commitment. I, in terms of the technology, it's, we have to allow our staff to get the job done and provide what is necessary, but unfortunately, the more we put in, the more need there is to have greater and greater funding streams to support it. And so if we're talking about really expanding technology, we can't do that without talking about expanding the IT, expanding the building, the spaces, the infrastructure. And so, you know, as we look at another year of. And so, you know, as we look at another year of recovery, but not able to get back to where we want to be yet, we have to be mindful of what are half-measures that will not get us near to where we want to be and what will be very effective uses of our, of our, of our time and of our efforts.
The class size argument has been resonating, particularly after last week, when it was pointed out, we had a math, seventh grade math class with a class size of thirty-seven. So that I think the first thing we really need to do is look at what our class sizes are. And in the budget process, I'd like to get a report of what our class sizes are in the, in the middle and high schools. So we have a sense of how things landed this year vis-à-vis what we planned for. Because that'll give us a sense of where we need to adjust our resources a little more. To, to have that class size information, be able to get a sense of how we're utilizing our staff and whether we're being effective and efficient in doing that, and where our real challenges lie, I think is gonna be a helpful tool for us going forward. The technology argument resonates with me as well. If we're asking teachers to do things vis-à-vis, you know, reporting, running their, you know, running grades through the student data system, doing presentations, the whole, the whole, things that we need to do digitally rather than on paper to be an efficient organization, we, we have to have the equipment to support that. And the, the issue of facilities around the district does raise its head. The Odyssean folks are making an important point for security in their building. I'm impressed by that discussion. I think that we need to also buy an adequate supply of duct tape to keep the high school running between now and the time we're able to, to move it forward. I mean, I'm just being metaphorical, but that's exactly the situation we're in, is that we've got an aging building where the infrastr- the, people do not realize what a challenge it is to keep this high school running. The tour that we took this month was an eye-opener for me. Because, I mean, when we go through this building normally, we're coming in on the third floor. Coming up here, the third floor wing where we come through, like room three oh two, these are some of our best classrooms in the building that we're seeing on a regular basis. And if you go elsewhere in the building, there's some really difficult conditions, both in terms of the way we're heating the building, the communications we're able to offer. We've got rooms without emergency communication. Lot of real significant issues that are going on. So keeping the eye on the ball, on, on, on the ball of doing the renovation and getting the building project moving forward is important, but we also have to keep things running in, in, in the interim. And I just also want to make sure that, you know, it's a question of who's caring for the caregivers. The elementary principals are running solo. I want to make sure that, that our administrators are finding support and finding their jobs to be doable so that, you know, there are oftentimes little low-cost things we can do to support them that they're never gonna ask for, but makes all the difference in the world. And I think that we really need to explore that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Thielman.
So I'm gonna speak to the priorities in a minute, but I have a question for Diane, because I just want to get something straight in my mind. I've seen different numbers, but how much more money are we gonna have to spend this year than we spent this, next year?
I can't answer that yet.
Do you have any, any range?
I don't want to ballpark it any more than the multi-year projection I gave you.
So what's the multi-year projections today?
It shows us that we're short for next year.
So we're short for next year?
Right, but that's based on, you know, not updated revenue projections. It's based on, on guesstimate with next year's salary, whereas I'm in the process of doing it person by person and having a very accurate read on next year's salary with the steps and lanes adjustments and all of that. So shortly into January, I should be able to provide you with that delta, bearing in mind that we're going to have to increase our out-of-district tuition line significantly to cover where we're gonna land. You know, this year we have reserves, but we have to build it into base for next year. So we're going to be, for expansion, we're going to be very dependent on additional revenues from the town. You know, I would be surprised if after we meet our needs for out-of-district tuition and our contractual obligations for salary, that there's much left.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay, so I would, yep.
Let me just say, will, will we have that, at that time, the governor's budget?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So, okay, so I, I, I see, so the question is that, on the table is the school committee members' priorities for the budget. So I think, I think priority one, for me, is inappropriate education of the Arlington community and town leaders of the realities the school department is facing now. We've been living within a multi-year plan that was adopted by the, by a vote of the voters in two thousand and eleven. And our enrollment has increased to such a degree that we can't live in the net plan anymore. So the first priority for me is an education of all town leaders, town meeting members, elected officials, members of the board of selectmen, finance committee members about our reality. The second thing that I'm gonna ask, the question I'm gonna ask when the budget is presented by, by the superintendent, superintendent, is how does this, how does this budget meet our, our priority, our, our goals and objectives? So we have a, we have a standing goal, which is, students in the aggregate at each grade level tested in English Language Arts and Mathematics will attain a student growth percentile of fifty-one or greater. In order to narrow the achievement gap, students in subgroups will receive additional support to improve their achievement on MCAS, which will be reflected in each school attaining an annual PPI of at least seventy-five. So we didn't, SGP in, in sixth grade math is forty-seven, SGP in, in seventh grade ELA is thirty-eight, SGP on tenth grade math is forty-four point five. So my first question is gonna be, can those, are, are those gonna be changed by more money? Or the first, or, or is that, or is that not the way we're gonna solve the problem? And make improvement at those levels? So that's, that's, that's the question that needs to, that the administrator needs to think about. Is it more money, or is it, is it, is it something else? More coaching, better coaching? Is it class size? I don't know, I don't know. I'm not in that building, I'm not in that grade, I'm not in the classroom, I'm not with the teacher, I'm not supervising directly, we're on, we're at a board level here, so it's hard for me to make a judgment. Maybe it is class size. Maybe it's better coaching of the, of the personnel? Maybe it's something else, I don't know. Maybe it's not more money, maybe it is. So I think the first thing that I'm gonna ask, or the thing that I'm gonna ask throughout the process is, tell me how the budget that you're presenting is tied to the goals and priorities of the district. And they don't, they, you know, some of the objectives might change a little next year. Will change a little, I'm sure, but based, but, but, but in terms of improving student achievement, the, the most important thing we do here, it, it probably isn't gonna change much. The data's not gonna change, and the, the goals aren't gonna change a lot. So I want, I want to make sure that as we, as we build a budget, as you deliver a budget to us, that it's tied to our goals, and that you can say to us when the budget is presented, by developing the budget in this way, by putting money into these, these resources, we're going to improve student achievement in the areas where we're not performing at the level we should be performing at, where the kids are not advancing to the degree they should be. So that's, that's really, that, I want to see a budget document that's aligned with, with goals, priorities, and objectives. That, the, the next thing is that we gotta inform the town loudly and clearly about our needs. We've gotta develop a budget aligned with goals, priorities, and objectives. And then thirdly, we've gotta show that we're finding efficiencies any way we can. So several years ago, I don't know, I don't know what year it was anymore, but we, we adopted, we decided to, to start using Power School. And we found out that the use of Power School made us more effective and efficient. We didn't need as many people, we could, in certain areas, in some places, made us more effective, more efficient operation. So to this, to the extent that you can come to us with a budget in February or March and say that I've, we've found some efficiencies because of technology, we've found some efficiencies because we can reorganize a department, that's a good thing. And I think the people that we're trying to convince to give us more money will appreciate that. And so I think your, your presentation's gotta include that too. Here are some ways that we've found to save some money. Here are some ways that we've found to make our operation more efficient. So those are my, those are my comments. And I, and I, and I asked you those questions because I, because we have a real problem here, and that is that we have a limited amount of resources right now to really make all the changes, the great changes that were suggested by a lot of talented people this evening. So that's my thought, those are my thoughts.
Ms. Hart?
So. So I think that, and I want you to know that we have started the education of town. We've been meeting with long-term planning. And I think that the best news about those meetings is that there has been no question that the schools need more money. The question has been how much? And how can we get the schools more money and not completely devastate the planning that's gone on fiscally for the town? And I really appreciate the thought, I know that several members of that committee have actually, you know, reached out to me, wanting to meet with me to better understand what is it about the schools? And I think that perhaps one of the things that we need to do is put something together. They need to understand that when we look at it, there's four huge stressors that are going on, and they've created the most perfect storm of financial shortfall in our schools. The first one is the special education out-of-district thing that we got nailed with this year. I mean, that's a, you know, almost three-quarters of a million dollars of a hit that is going to follow us now forever on our heels. The second one is enrollment, which has been slowly but surely increasing the size of the number of students that we have to serve, rapidly increasing in the last couple of years to a point where all of a sudden, I think we were all like, whoa, wait, you know? Even myself, I've always thought of Arlington as having forty-five hundred students, but we have fifty-two hundred students. We don't serve the same population, and the handshake of the money that we got has never, you know, we'd never really thought about it as enrollment. We always thought, well, you know, yeah, everybody grows a little, shrinks a little. And so we are suddenly realizing how much that has impacted us. And as we said, we have been very good about trying to shelter that in our elementary schools. And now we are seeing what has happened as they move through the rest of the system. So here they are, in the Odyssean and the high school, needing, you know, almost, you know, just huge amounts of, of money to support teachers. The third is this new evaluation system. And the stress that puts on is the need for more administrators and more administrative support, because now we can no longer even get the job done that's required with the administrative staff that we have, which in the past years, we have gutted in order to maintain the class sizes and everything else that we've had to do. So we need more administrators, we need more teachers, we need more money for special enrollment, for special education. And with the Common Core, the Common Core is also now, with the rigors of the Common Core, we're being forced to really think about class size again. You cannot deliver what the Common Core is asking at the class sizes that we have in this town now, which we have had because the enroll- and the whole thing is just like, a- a- and it's like making my head spin, you know? Like, there's not one thing that can give. There is nothing. And we are, we are in a box right now, and we have all of these requirements. And so I think that, I think that Jeff's right. One of the things that we really have to do is make sure that people understand it's not just one thing. It is that all of this has kind of, you know, happened and, or is happening to us. And that one of the things that is not going to be okay is for us to sit here and try to cut services and in any way damage the school system that the town has, one, become fairly proud of, and two, that parents rely on. And so we also need to make sure that, you know, they need to understand that, that there's, you know, a real kind of agreement with the people who live here, that, that this is the level of school system they want. And if we have to go through a year where we can't deliver some of this stuff. Now, I think that part of what we need to do is for each of these asks, for each and every level of school, for each and everything that we ask, we have to ask ourselves, okay, so if we can add some teachers and we have the room, what's the priority? You know, and within every single thing, you know, within the facilities, well, the priority has to be security across the board, number one thing, right? So, okay, so let's do everything we can with facilities to do security, that's gotta be in there, you know? And when we look at, you know, all the teachers that we need, we have to say, okay, well, one, we have space issues, so we can't really have all the teachers they need. What teachers can we have? What are the priorities of those teachers? It's gonna be really one of those hard budget years, I think, where we have to kind of look at for every single thing that we do, what are the, the constraints? And I have no idea how we do it, because I feel like this is like a ten-by-ten Rubik's Cube that is just huge. I mean, there's just so many variables to what we have to work with. I remember last, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, you know, we, I, I came up with, we did sticky notes, remember? And we were like, okay, we just, we put all the priorities on sticky notes. I can't even put these on sticky notes right now, because the, the way that the, the constraints kind of push in on each one of those. So, I mean, I mean, moving forward, the number one thing, you're right, is that we need to get out, we are out there, we're talking to these people, but they need to really understand where, where all of the stressors are coming from. And, and the problem is that each one of those stresses a different area. So it's like, oh, you can't cut back on administration to put more teachers in the classroom, because we need the administration for the eval system. And you can't have bigger class sizes, because the Common Core is really pushing on these rigorous things. And, you know, and I'm just, and we don't have enough teachers for the number of students we have. So I don't know, it is gonna be hard. It's gonna be a really hard year. And I think that we need to get that message out there, we need to work as hard as we can, we need to ask for as much money as the town can possibly help to make this happen and to move us forward. Because I do, I, I mean, just looking at just the requests that we've had so far, we're well over two million dollars of, of money that we don't have right now. So I, my priority is to try to do what we can with what we have and try to get as much as we can to solve the problems that we have. And I'm gonna do my best to, to help us get through that. I think that, you know, Kiersey, you know, asking what parents want, I have a feeling that they're going to be in all of this. You know, I'm sure that class size is probably, you know, important as well as the supports for all of the teachers and the class size issues that we have. I mean, it's interesting to kind of read through some of these and, and see what it is that, that people wanted. And, and, you know, the principals are asking for support for the teachers that they have. You know, we've seen that in the, you know, request for TAs and the request for behavioral specialists and the request for, you know, kind of piecemealing things together. And I so want this to be the best school system that we can make it. And that, I think that one of the things we're gonna have to do is kind of get out there with a little bit more information and, I mean, there's not really, we can't, I can't ask what people want anymore, because I feel like we have so much that we already need, that the need is already greater than what, than, than what we can offer. And so, I don't know, I know we can educate them, I don't know if we can take in any more requests, though. But I, I want to thank everyone for all of the information and all of the, you know, detail that they've given us so far. But as we move forward, I think that the best thing we can do is really try to start to put numbers to this and really show people where we are, what we, and, and reiterate how well we have done with the money that we have had over these years. And really, you know, that there's just a certain point at which everything, you know, there's just no more that we can do with, you know, the limited resources. there's just no more that we can do with, you know, the limited resources that we have. We really do need more resources. So, I don't know, start digging, digging for gold, I don't know. I'm at a loss, but that's it.
The upside of sitting here is I've reprioritized my priorities three times, listening to all of you. First off, I'd like to, Mr. Pierce asked me to, one prior, major priority that he had was the library job descriptions and the pay, the reclassification. He wants to see that go forward. I support Mr. Thielman very strongly in getting those documents. I think they would help us in our communicate, us in understanding and communicating to the community, I think, showing that. Answer, try to answer your question, which one of these things, class size, to improve the achievement, increase support from the department? I think all of them. And I cannot commend Ms. Stocks enough for all the work and, and the passion that she's put into this, I think we all feel that way. Our best thing would be, be one of the winners of that recent lottery ticket, a hundred and twenty-six million cash would handle us for maybe a year and a half. Okay, a couple of years then, but that's not going to happen. And I, I mean, I am fortunate coming on this committee as things started to turn for the better. And I commend the, the committee for all the work that they did just keeping this ship afloat. As I said before, we're producing a phenomenal product for all the problems that we have. And it's, the balloon's going to bust. And I support, we need to communicate to the town. I think it began by just walking some of the townsfolk through the building the other day. Mr. Schlickman said it, I thought I understood this building and I saw things that were really eye-openers. Today, a week or so ago, I was in the Thompson School and the dichotomy, I mean, it's scary. We produce a phenomenal product. It shows every single year with graduation and our students and I, it, it's, I don't understand how we're able to do it with what we've got.
Great teachers.
Phenomenal teachers. But that balloon, I mean, one of the things in technology, the park requirements, and I talked to Dr. Chesim about trying to get something through the, the new cable contracts, we're going to have to, this town is going to have to expand its broadband for us to be effective at all. Because if we end up doing this test on paper, it's not going to produce anything more. We're going to be waiting for results the way we've been for MCAS. And one of the benefits of park is if we do it online, it's immediate feedback. So, which one? I don't know. Mr. Schlickman.
I, I just want, you know, the whole discussion of class size, I think parallels the core problem we're fa, one of the core problems we're facing is the increased enrollment. The, the argument was made by one of the staff members who came to talk to us tonight about the staffing levels at the Odison. Since two thousand eight, so that as a baseline, I decided to take a look at our student enrollment since two thousand eight. Since two thousand eight, comparing to two thousand thirteen school year, which would be a year ago, the October one, two thousand twelve count, in, in that time period, we've had a nine point seven percent increase in elementary, a four point five percent increase in middle, and a nine point five percent increase in high school students. District-wide, it's an eight point two percent increase in our students. And we haven't increased the mileage of our roads in town by eight point two percent. We ha, you know, we haven't increased the population of the town or the library users by eight point two percent. Nothing has increased in the town by these figures the way the student enrollment has. It's part of our success is because we're doing so well, people view this as an attractive town. They're moving here and bringing their kids. And that's one of the things that's helped kept our property values in Arlington up after the recession vis-a-vis other communities in, in Massachusetts. We have a strong real estate market and one of the reasons is the quality of schools. So, when I talk about class size, it's in the context of what, how we are handling this increase in enrollment. And that's really one of the elephants in the room, that and the quality of the facility. We, we need to be talking about increased enrollment and the effects of that and the quality of this facility at every meeting because they are such critical parts of the puzzle. And if we don't solve those problems, we're in deep trouble as a community. And if we solve them and solve them well, we're going up to the next level, we're going to be even better place to live.
Thank you, Ms. Thielman.
What's the timeline for getting some clarity from the town as to whether or not we might get more funding? Like, what's?
The town budget is submitted the middle of January, I think fifteen, something like that. And the discussion has been, let's get a sense of what we would be receiving as, as an enrollment index. The discussion is, but we're keeping the plan as we've had, the three and a half percent in operating, the seven percent of special education. But there's no denying that we've seen phenomenal enrollment growth just in the last few years. And how do we capture that? How do we make a, how do we put in enrollment index? It's almost a separate line item. I think everyone has agreed at this point that that's what needs to happen. As Cindy said, it's really what the, what the amount is. What our position has been is that we'd like to know what the amount is so we could plan. That amount really affects how we, we take the delta of what we potentially would have under the current plan with the all-in and how we, how we prioritize here. And it's going to be sort of a lot of thinking on the part of the, the staff and the teachers in this building and, and not this building, this district, as well as your thoughts as well. I think we've done a very good job over the last few years of trying to make things work, make things meet. But I think we really are at a critical point. And we can't sustain the level of achievement with class sizes in the thirties at the, at middle school. I mean, that, that's been a high priority of this district. And, and when you have class sizes, cluster sizes of one thirty, and you think they're divided among four teachers, so right away, you, you can, you can see how big the class sizes have to be. The average class size is at least twenty-five in a cluster. It has to be because five times twenty-five is one twenty-five and you don't even get to the one thirty, one thirty-seven. So, you're going to be over one twenty-five. Now, it can be that they get distributed differently depending on a number of factors. And of course, math is the one that gets hit because you have two levels. It's the only subject that's leveled in the, in the middle school. So, it, it naturally has that precariousness of having some classes be larger than others. They're not evenly divided. And unfortunately, in one cluster, it, it's sort of like, it's a perfect storm this year in terms of what happened. But we have to fix that. And by the way, we are working on a plan and I'll tell you what the plan will be at the next meeting as to how we're going to deal with that, those two large class sizes. They're, they're just not acceptable. But, yeah, but it's going to take a lot, it's going to take some real thinking about this because there's a myriad of needs, but we're not going to probably have that much money to, to work with. What that number is, I don't know, but it's not going to be two million, pretty sure.
Yeah, no matter what.
So, the real, I mean, the real positioning with the town is we need additional money so that we can staff to our enrollment.
Right.
And the staff to enrollment is X. You're going to come up with what that number of staff is. You're going to have to.
Right. What do you use as the, what is the metric? Not, that maybe that doesn't get backed into quite that way, but rather, it gets backed into a different metric way, which is looking at the number of enrollment increases and doing some kind of percent on the per pupil cost. There's another way of getting it to it. And Diane did a very good diagram and in fact, you showed them the diagram, didn't you? Yeah. Of different, there's two different ways you can approach it and they actually come out pretty close. So, I think that's going to be the, the discussion. And also, then there will be, that, that number that we might see in January could change after we see the governor's budget as well. There's, that, that's a possibility. So, by the time, I think that by the time the school committee needs to vote on the budget, we should be much clearer as to what the number will be. It probably will not be as clear mid-January as it will be the end of January.
One thing I've been thinking about down at this end is that the pressures that are being put on our budget by the new evaluation system and by the Common Core, to me, start sounding very much like an unfunded mandate. And, no, I'm, I'm, I, I know I'm kind of preaching a part here, but I'm asking my more politically astute colleagues if there is, I'm thinking we should be at least communicating this to our legislature, legislators. And I know that sometimes the attorney general and stuff has taken up unfunded mandates. I'm not sure how you would go about kicking that upstairs, but I'm just, I, I don't expect money coming down to address this, but I still think it doesn't hurt to complain and, and to point out what the problems are. And so, I'm saying, does anyone have an idea of what to do?
Correct me if I'm wrong, the Common Core is federal, am I correct?
It's state.
State accepted?
Well, the state is.
Everything is state.
From a federal.
No, federal, well, the federal government's really not, it's, it's a, there was a consortium of governors, it's, it's the, it's, it's a consort, it's a collaboration between different states.
As far as unfunded mandates, my understanding is you can file suit with, and it's not the attorney general, you, it's the, I'm trying to remember her name.
Just hand bump, the auditor has been going after this.
Oh, is it? Oh, okay.
And, and if it passes that, that stage, it then goes forward. And that's how we got the, the schools got the money for the.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The transportation.
Right.
So, there is a precedent for it, so.
Yeah.
If you want to make a motion to, at least speak to the.
Can I?
Or you can.
I, I just, I'm wondering, can I do it at the next meeting to, to figure out what the motion should be? But I'm just thinking we should do something.
Chase any dollar we can get.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time? Thank you. Sorry to add more to your burden, Cindy. This time, the superintendent's report.
Since, since last week, there's not much to report. The only thing I would like to, well, just actually a couple of things. One has to do with snow.
Snow?
A snow that I've heard from traffic supervisors that, asking me if I would say to parents and the community to be extra cautious. They're, they're finding that people are still trying to drive around schools the way you would when there's no snow. And that's been a problem, especially with the roads more narrow. And I think that particularly, that's happening down at Thompson, there's a, North Union is a bit of a speedway at times. So, I just would urge parents and people in the community to use extra caution in these narrow roads. We, we, we are starting to see students, I, I've seen some students walking in the street and I just want us to be conscious of that. And hopefully, we, maybe we've had our, it'd be nice if this was our share of snow for the year.
Oh, keep dreaming.
Keep dreaming.
I was blown away, you know, I woke up, when I woke up Wednesday and I went to the, you know, the Storm Force or whatever the, you know, website is where there were cancellations, there was not one delay or one cancellation. And I just was, well, not on the website. I mean, I'm sure that somewhere, there was some district that did, but there was none on the Channel Seven, whatever I was looking at, website that I usually go to to look at for the, that. And I was blown away. One, because, I mean, it was pretty nasty. I mean, I live on Pleasant Street, it was like a parking lot for at least three hours. But just, it says so much to the people who I know were up all night long clearing that. I mean, because when I woke up, Pleasant Street was down to pavement. And I thought, oh my gosh, like, they have been out there doing that the whole time and every school, at least as far as I can see, was open, there wasn't a delay. You know, I was, I just wanted to say thank you so much to those people because that was, I, I was for sure that it was going to be a delay. I was absolutely certain.
And they did a good job.
And it wasn't even a delay. I mean, we were actually ready to, ready to roll and, and it was. I mean, I got to work without a problem, there was parking, there was, I mean, it was, so.
They did a, a great job. And our DPW does a great job. Arlington roads tend to be a lot better than some of the surrounds.
Yes.
Yeah, so they do a wonderful job. Actually, I'm glad you brought that up besides being able to again give some kudos to them and to our own custodians. They're out there early and we have some plows too that we help out with as well. It's just that when it really gets heavy, our plows are not as heavy duty as with DPW. So, we have to wait until they get the major roads done before they can get into the parking lots. But there, some people ask, would, you know, if it looks like it was going to get bad, would we do an early dismissal? And I just want to say, there would have to be rather extraordinary circumstances. I mean, really extraordinary to do that because we, we just can't, parents might not be home if we were dismissing early because they, they depend on a certain time that they're going to get out. And we do not want any particular elementary children to be going home to no one at home. So, it's very hard to really do a, well, delays we can do because that's happen in the morning, but to do an, a, a early release day, that almost has to be decided the night before, like five o'clock by six o'clock news because parents have to be able to, to scramble and, and provide some coverage. So, it would never happen in the morning. It would really have to be so extraordinary to do a early release at the last minute. The other thing I wanted to mention is that the, even though it's still a ways away, but just bring everybody's attention to the MLK observance, which is going to be on the twentieth and we'll talk more, we'll have another meeting before then. But there will be, as in the past, a program this year, they're not doing a potluck dinner, but doing a, a potluck, I think, dessert. And I think that we've, one thing I think that you find very interesting is that not only are we attracting greater enrollments, but one of the other things we're attracting are more programs for international students who want to tour the school or come here to school. We might have had in the past, our sister city come for a tour. And we do that annually, we've been doing this for a long time. But this year at the high school, we have another group from Japan coming, we have a group from China, South Africa, and Israel, all happening within the next couple of months. Yeah. So, it's very interesting. And of course, the number of people who would want to come to school here, the list is much longer than we feel that we can accommodate. So, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm just wondering if we could put the appeal in though during this meeting because the DPW and the school staffs did a great job in terms of the public roadways and the sidewalks that are school department property. But a number of children did have difficulty on the sidewalks that access to the school from Mass Ave to various buildings, just neighborhoods. And, you know, it's, it's always a challenge through snow in a timely manner, but just, you know, putting the plug out there that we are a walking community. We do have neighborhood schools, even when the weather is bad, a good proportion of our students do walk. And so, we certainly would appeal to the community members to make sure that.
The sidewalks are clear for children.
I don't like seeing students walk in the street.
Right. And I'd add to what Ms. Hyam said is to also clear the crosswalk and the corners. So, you have to, I know that DPW does a nice job and makes a nice big mound, but if there's not a cut through, that actually impedes kids. And also, as they go up and down, they fall into the street some of the times or else they just walk around and go, are in the street much longer. So, that's important too.
Yeah. Need a shovel brigade.
Thank you.
The new phys ed requirements.
There you go, everyone carry a shovel to school.
At this time, we'll do the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event, the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of warrant number one four zero eight. Approval of warrant number 14082 dated December 12, 2013. Total warrant amount, $865,662.30. Approval of draft minutes, November, November 14, 2013.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Subcommittee liaison reports, policies and procedures.
No report.
Thank you. Budget, Ms. Starks.
We have a budget subcommittee meeting was rescheduled due to the weather. So we will be meeting on Thursday, January 2nd, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. Shockingly, we will be talking about the budget.
Thank you. Community relations.
Nothing to report.
Curriculum instruction assessment accountability.
We had a meeting last night where we just, a quick meeting because of schedule constraints, where we discussed the Tools of the Mind curriculum, and we learned that we're going to be seeing a redacted text as an example to, for us to look at. We also heard from the Vision 2020 Education Subcommittee, and we discussed the new Athletic Handbook, which will be coming again at another meeting. We're going to be meeting again on January 6th at 7:15 here.
Thank you. Facilities, nothing at this time. And the chair, take privilege, I would like to commend two third grade teachers from Thompson, Siobhan Foley and Laura McKenny. They prepared their students for a mock town meeting today, and they, each class brought a warrant article, and the other class opposed that article. I wish, again, I had taped it, because it would be a good example for our town meeting, how to argue points respectfully and nicely. One article was to eliminate smoking from the entire town, it passed. The second article was to increase, and the only reason it failed, it was just identified as one school, increase PE and.
And art.
And art. And the, the students that, there were arguments, and you could hear it. They were very, in opposing the cigarette ban, they were not arguing with something they actually wanted, but they had good arguments on freedom, individual freedom. And it's to the credit of these, these two teachers. They walked all the way up, which. It took, because of the snow, and I think the teachers agreed to do it in non-snow time in the future. It was a wonderful time. It was a wonderful time. Secretary's report.
We have received the following correspondence from our last meeting. Email regarding the death of an AHS student who was in an out-of-district placement. The Commissioner's Weekly Update dated December 13, 2013. The Flyer announcing the 26th Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday Observance to be held on Monday, January 20, 2014. An email about icy conditions at Hardy School. An email from Andra and Barry Shea, bishop parents opposing the Tools of the Mind curriculum. Email from Heather DiGregorio, another bishop parent with concerns about the Tools of the Mind curriculum. Further communication on the paperless meetings and requirements thereof, and a copy of the letter from DESE informing the superintendent that AHS senior, I am so sorry, Zaharula Blanis has been invited to apply to the 2014 U.S. Presidential Scholars Program. That's it.
Thank you. There is no executive session tonight. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
All moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.